I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, March the 3rd, 2014. Very glad to have everyone here. I'm especially glad to have my good friend Pastor Shell Osmond from the Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God at 4100 King Springs Road. He's going to come forward at this time and give our invocation, also losing the place of fat flag. So would everyone please rise?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, if you'd like to join with me. Father, we thank you so much for your love and mercy and grace. Thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening. Lord, I do pray that you would lead and guide and direct the conversations and all the decisions that would be made, that they would be done so for the betterment of this great community. Bless all in attendance and all who will be the recipients of the decisions that are made here tonight. We ask in your great name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And for those folks that are new to town or want to change, I'm sure that the Life Church Assembly, Smyrna Assembly of God would love to have you. I've actually stopped by and they've let me in. Start at 10:30, they're out at 12:00. I asked Shell, what are you going to do for an hour and a half? But you get in the spirit. It's a great church and we're glad that they're part of our community. Shell also does a lot of other things. He's on the Public Safety Foundation and they really give back. They're great for our community. So stop by and see them. They start taking up offering at about 11:15, so. Thank you, Shell. Agenda changes. Got a couple of items on the agenda that we are going to table. Let's see. Public hearing rezoning request, 2014-034. That item will be tabled until April the 21st, along with C. It's related to that. That'll be tabled till the 21st of April. Once we get to that item on the agenda, I'll ask if there's anyone here for that. I think those are the only two things that we have. Got a couple of council people that are out tonight. Ron Fennel has a conflict with his real job. Not sure what that is, but he's a lobbyist for the state and he's, I think this is crossover day, whatever that means. And Terry Nulwich is out of town, so. We have a proclamation and there's someone here from the American Red Cross, Rachel White. There she is. I'm going to ask the Councilman Wade Lineker, you can come up to the podium. I'll ask the Councilman Wade Lineker, please read that proclamation and then we'll give you a second to say a little something about the American Red Cross. Mr. Lineker?
Ms. White, thank you for joining with us. I do have a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna titled "In recognition of American Red Cross Month, March 2014." Whereas, the American Red Cross helps nearly 1,300 disaster-stricken families each year in metro Atlanta, provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans and their families, collects and distributes food for patients and hospitals, and annually trains 27,000 of our neighbors in first aid, water safety, and other life-saving skills. And whereas, the Red Cross has been helping metro Atlanta for 100 years, Red Cross heroes are on the front lines in local communities every day, volunteering their time, giving blood, taking life-saving courses, and providing financial donations to help those in need. And whereas, the Red Cross is not a government agency and relies on donation of time, money, and blood to do its work. And whereas, March is a month dedicated to all those everyday heroes who joined the Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. And whereas, in its centennial year, the Metro Atlanta Red Cross is celebrating our community and all of the work we make possible with our support. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Smyrna and Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this third day of March in the year of our Lord, 2014. Signed, A. Max Bacon, Mayor.
Thank you.
We could deliver that. Ms. White, we're glad that you're here to accept this.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Anything you want to say?
I would. So as a proud Red Cross board member and volunteer and resident of Smyrna, it's my honor to be here with you today to celebrate Red Cross Month proclamation from the city of Smyrna, especially during the centennial year as mentioned. We want to thank the many everyday heroes that reside within this community who've made our work possible for the past 100 years through their gifts of time, blood, and money. Thank you so much for having us here today. We invite you to join us as we begin the second century of helping in Smyrna. And there are so many ways in which we can partner to serve the community. So thanks for the opportunity to speak and for your support of American Red Cross Month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Of course.
Yeah, get a no. Cheese?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Item four is land issues, zoning and annexation. A is 2014-003, public hearing zoning request. Z14-001, zoning amendment to modify the currently approved zoning conditions. Z11-009, for the constructions of a McDonald's restaurant, 1.07 acre tract, landlot 380, 3240 South Cobb Drive, Integrity Engineering and Development Services, Inc. The applicant here. Okay? Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, the property in question was originally rezoned on January the 19th, 2010, for the redevelopment of an existing shopping center, which was approved by the mayor and council by a vote of five to zero. The property went through a subsequent zoning amendment to provide greater flexibility in the development of outlots number one through number eight, which was also approved by the mayor and council by a vote of five to zero. Integrity Engineering and Development Services seeking approval of another zoning amendment to allow the construction of a McDonald's restaurant. Proposed restaurant needs several modifications from the currently approved zoning conditions. And I believe Mr. Sudrath is going to be going through those changes here in a minute, but staff does recommend approval with conditions.
Okay, the applicants here, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comment concerning this amendment to the currently approved zoning? Let the record show there is none. This is Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sudrath, would you give us background on this in addition to what the city administrator has?
Thank you, Mr. Welch. The introduction that Mr. Taylor gave outlines that it is three requests in one, or three portions in one request. It is an amendment to an existing plan. Obviously, we like to call it the Kroger Shopping Center, but we're dealing here with one of the outlots that actually fronts along South Cobb. And the original plan had the building elevations proposed to, that the front of the building would actually front South Cobb. What they would like to do is modify that orientation and as a result, there are some other issues with that. Here's the zoning map. I think we all know, excuse me, what shopping center we are talking about. The subject property is outlined there. It actually shows up rather large because it is one big tract of land because they had subdivided that shopping center into multiple parcels because Kroger wanted to own their parcel. And since it was in the middle, obviously, it created tracts on both sides. What would happen here is that that front parcel that runs along South Cobb, if this request is approved, they would subdivide out that parcel. So that's why this is displayed as a large tract because in essence, it is today. In addition to the orientation aspect, which, to give it a little more detail, would have the drive-through side of the building running along South Cobb. In addition to that request, they're also asking to allow freestanding monument sign. That meets the requirements of the sign ordinance, as well as to reduce the number of parking spaces. When the shopping center was approved, there were a lot of sign-related negotiations and ultimately, the conditions that were placed on the property. And one of those was in exchange for allowing them to have additional featured monument, shopping center kind of signs, the tall ones that we were all familiar with, is that we would not allow any individual monument signs on the outlots. They are asking to have one on that. So that's what the three are. You've got a sign change, a parking space change, and then the building orientation change. So those are the three requests. The option, we've gone through this, y'all have seen a couple of plans. It's now down to the point of basically option A or option B on their proposed site plan. This is option A, to help screen the drive-through windows a little bit more from South Cobb. They are, you know, they'll have the normal landscaping stuff that we discussed earlier. I'm sure that they will confirm all of that when they get up here. But that option A here, in essence, establishes a island that runs with the drive-through, that it will also be landscaped. It is illustrated here, you know, with sort of five column-type trees. And, you know, they'll have the normal ground cover in between the trees as well. But that's option A. This is a sort of a Photoshop issue where they have placed the McDonald's on the site, looking from South Cobb, and then showing you the trees and how that would work. This is option B, where they would, and there are photos on the bottom left side of the slide, where they would actually place a screening wall there. But to have that wall actually stay vertical, it needs to be braced and that top slide shows the bracing on that. Staff has looked at this. We've had extensive conversations about all of the changes that they're asking for. But staff, as of now, is supporting the option A, which would be just the landscape strip, which was the previous photo. These are the proposed building elevations. I'm sure they will better describe it than me, but the bottom line is this is their new look and they want to use that look. Now, again, I'm sure they'll go into greater detail, but the existing McDonald's that is currently on South Cobb would be moved to this location. Because I'm sure people, especially in the audience, have that question, what happens to that building? This is their proposed monument sign. This would be an eight-foot-high sign, 32 square feet. Pictures of the subject property, I think, as I said, we're all familiar with what we're talking about. Staff does recommend approval of option A, which is classified there in line one. We would restrict them to the building elevations that they have sent us and that were submitted on December 13th. With regard to the signage issue, it really is a trade-off. One of the other things that we did when we precluded individual out parcel monuments is that we gave them additional shopping center monument signage and they could have four, two on Concord, two on South Cobb. What they're in essence doing here is really trading one of those signs and eliminating it completely. My guess is, given everything else that I will tell you in a minute, they're basically losing the Concord Road sign. There's already a sign up on Concord Road, there's one sign up on South Cobb there at the light, at the main entrance. They would keep the other South Cobb sign, but want it located up the hill, meaning going south, more up at the top of that hill, between the two curb cuts, the one that's next to the McDonald's that we're talking about now. And then there's an existing curb cut that is behind the Citgo Station that actually sits at the corner of Concord.
Ken, you're saying that they would lose it. It's really not, it's really not there.
Yeah, right. They're not losing it in that it's there, but they would lose the ability to have it there in the future. Because we approved for, they're willing to knock that number down to three. But they do want the flexibility to move that second sign on South Cobb up the hill. Because it was originally believed that it would be down at that major driveway.
And just so that we're clear, when we rezoned this in 2010, we rezoned it, the council rezoned it to a plan.
Right.
Of course, all that's changed.
That's correct.
Right. So we're probably going to have, hopefully, we'll have some additional opportunities to see this whole center redeveloped.
Correct. Yeah, I think everybody, including the owners, hope that this transaction, if indeed is approved, actually triggers and allows them to do more and move in the direction to start filling in that shopping center. The last amendment is something that we've talked about with them, and that is, hey, what happens to the existing McDonald's? This is the fourth condition in which we are saying it is conditioned upon the demolition of the McDonald's at 3414 South Cobb within 60 days of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the new McDonald's, which would be at 3240 South Cobb Drive. And if, for some reason, that they cannot achieve the 60 days to get it down, then they have the right to come back in front of council to ask for an extension on that. And having said that, that is what staff's recommendation is about. The bottom line is, in some way, shape, or form, we are supporting all three of these adjustments now. We have worked with McDonald's, as you know, pretty much since the first of the year on this. A lot of give and take and discussion and conversations. And I do believe we've come to a very acceptable product and staff is recommending approval.
So it is your recommendation, your staff's recommendation at this point, to approve?
Yes, as outlined.
Okay.
Can you go back to that, the original rendering of the white, I guess stacked, whatever it was?
Oops.
Is that option A? That's what I'm looking at on the...
But you want to, Mayor, where do you want me to stop on this now?
There's a big difference between the color of this, the one I'm looking at. This rendering is a dark, really a dark brown brick. First one we saw, not that one.
Not this one? Not option I?
Where's, I know, bingo, that one.
Okay.
Is that what we're going to see?
I would let the applicants answer that.
So you're refusing to answer my question?
I don't want to mislead you.
No. I like this one over the brown, so. Any questions of Ken? Thank you, Ken. Mickey D, come on up here. If you'll tell us who you are and we're glad that y'all are here. We're looking forward to another place I can get something to eat at. I don't know how y'all are going to compete with the Krispy Kreme though, because that has been unbelievable. I took my mother there yesterday. Unbelievable, Sunday afternoon at 4:30. Took us 20 minutes to get through the line. Had to push down two or three elderly people older than me so I could get in there. If you'll tell us who you are and...
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, for being here tonight. Thank you for your time. My name is Anthony Lynch with Integrity Engineering and Development Services. I'm here representing McDonald's tonight. We also have several staff members and members of McDonald's team here tonight from construction, real estate, and the franchise. And we want to thank you for your time. We've met with you a couple of times in your committee meetings and it was very helpful for us to see what you're desiring, what type of development you're desiring here. Staff met with us several times as well and they were very helpful also to get us to the point where we are today. We are here to answer any questions you have. I think we can answer just about any question you have about McDonald's tonight. We have several folks here with a broad knowledge base of the development. And with regards to the question on the, specific question on the rendering, the color of the brick and the stone will be very close to the Kroger. That's what we're intending to match. Those renderings were created by two different computer programs. That's why there's a little bit of a different color to it. So if you go look at the Kroger, it's a very, it's kind of more of a dark color than the second rendering you saw. So it's going to match closer to the rendering that you saw viewing from South Cobb Drive. That would be a better representation of the color that we're intending for this location. But any questions you guys have, feel free to ask and we will answer them.
Yep. Mr. Lynch, just to kind of get back to the mayor's question, in the application, there's building elevations, which Mr. Sudrath showed, and then there was the option A, building elevation with the landscape. And that one differed in that there was more stonework around the drive-through windows than what was on the building elevation. I'm just wondering which of those is what you're asking us to approve, because they're not the same.
Yeah, the second rendering that didn't have the stone around the windows, that's a prototype rendering. And what we've agreed to with staff is to have the stone around the windows as shown on the first rendering from the side.
So the site plan option A, kind of the long view that we saw up on the screen, that's the one you're proposing?
That's correct. That's the elevation. And that elevation shows some of the locations of the landscape plantings in the island between the drive-through and the drive aisle. It also shows landscaping that's going to be out in the landscape strip as well.
Yeah, I like that much better. I think that's a good move. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Welch, were you going to ask him about the monument sign?
Yes, there were some questions. Came in the pre-council meeting here regarding the monument sign itself. Currently, you have a sign that's a solid sign. Would there be an issue with McDonald's as far as going back with the arch? The floating arch, so to speak?
I'll let real estate or McDonald's Construction answer that. They're changing, currently changing their sign types, and so they may be able to answer that better as far as what they can do.
Good evening. My name's Todd Williams. I'm an area construction manager with McDonald's. The sign that we have proposed is an LED sign. It is a, it's a green, what they would consider a green sign. It doesn't use as much energy. We can certainly investigate going back with the floating sign, but at this time, it's, the floating signs are kind of going away and we're going more with the solid panels.
Okay. A couple of other questions, I guess, for your group. You're asking us to go from 53 parking spaces to 43. I'm sure y'all do understand the implications of that. I mean, this is your call, but that's a reduction of 10 spaces and that's a pretty significant...
Yes, Mr. Welch, I don't know if you've had the chance to read through some of the data that we worked together with Mr. Sudrath on. Excuse me, I'm Karen Sanders with McDonald's and Real Estate. And we went through some calculations to show what we traditionally do. And we went through our drive-through percentages versus our dining-in percentages and came out to the calculation. And we've had to do this in different circumstances before, where at any given time, really for any peak hour, we need 22 parking spaces. Yes, we are aware, since our drive-through business has grown exponentially over the years to a point where it's approaching, in some restaurants, 75% at all times, we found that our parking needs are becoming significantly less.
Okay. Finally, another question regarding the landscaping. I think our final submission that we got did not include a landscape plan. The original one did and it had a nice landscape plan, and then we added the little island out in front of the drive-through windows. Is it fair to assume that the original landscape plan will be a part of the final plan plus the, I believe there are five trees within that little island, plus some small landscaping? Is that a fair assumption?
That's correct. We'll have small landscaping in between those trees and then we're going to supplement what you see on that rendering with the original landscaping that was planned, which is going to modify it some because the building has shifted a little bit, but it will be very close to the same.
Okay. Mr. Sudrath, is that part of our conditions?
You are free to make that as part of your condition, Mr. Welch. The ordinance automatically picks it up anyway. I don't see that there's any harm in doing that. But I would, just for clarification sake, we're not substituting the strip in front for any other landscaping. It would be in combination with the normal requirements on the landscaping.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Any other questions?
I guess if we could just go back to the monument sign. I've noticed since this application came forward, I've paid more attention to McDonald's stores in other communities. I saw one in Carrollton Saturday. I saw one in Lawrenceville a week ago, you know, how they're doing. And I really like the idea, from a stylistic standpoint, in terms of just overall attractiveness of kind of the base with the arches.
See-through.
As opposed to kind of a solid sign with arches painted or whatever on that. I would think the arches could still be lit internally with LED.
If you could just give me one minute, I want to converse with my partner here, but at the same time, I did want to mention that we, at our last workshop, we didn't have the pleasure of speaking directly with you, but we do have a, took your comments into consideration. And we have the bike rack in front of the store.
Oh, excellent.
Which you guys had some great, we love getting the great ideas, because sometimes we don't think about those little things like that. We're so focused on the site layout and the building. And then also the soldier, how do you say it, Todd? I can't get it right. Soldier?
The soldier course, brick pavers through the crosswalks, across both entrances and also from the building going out to the handicap parking stalls.
Thank you for that. I think, again, those are great improvements.
Yeah, those are, I wanted to make sure you knew that. Just if you excuse me one second.
Can you get closer to the microphone?
Just wanted to talk about the sign. And the reason I wanted to talk to Todd about it is McDonald's has, part of the McDonald's, Ray Kroc hamburgers, is standardization. So we want you to go anywhere in the country and get the same hamburger and the same french fries, whether you're in Canada, in Asia, wherever. And part of that is also falls through with our building prototypes and our signage prototypes. So while I would like to say, sure, we can do that, because I like that sign as well, I want to make sure that we don't get in trouble. So...
Y'all go ahead and talk.
Yeah.
They're going to come back, they're going to do it. They're gonna come back, they're gonna do it.
Karen. You want to make it a condition, we can make it a condition.
Karen?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was just gonna mention, I've been noticing the McDonald's at Powers Ferry and Northside Drive.
I love that one.
I do, too. They've got a lot of landscaping over there, and they've got the floating sign, too.
I have it on my cellphone. I have it on my cellphone because I was going to come to you and show you that sign is the monument sign that I wanted to put, that height. Really, I wanted to show you what that height looked like in relationship to the store and that new with the brick base. And I took a picture for you because I was, you know, we were talking about getting the sign out there. So we were thinking alike. Yeah, I do. And we're fine. He and I can work it out with the powers that be up there. And if you want to make it a condition, we can put the flying art sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Can't wait till y'all open up. And I know they taste just as good as the one I got Saturday. I love the double cheeseburger. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, first of all, I'd like to say I really do appreciate McDonald's working with us on this. It has, it's been an enjoyable task. I know y'all have come in on several occasions. We've spoken about this quite a bit. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to award, or recommendation to approve the zoning request, Z14001, zoning amendment to modify the current approved zoning conditions, Z11009, for the construction of McDonald's Restaurant, 1.07 acres, landlot 380 at 3240 South Cobb Drive, for Integrity Engineering Development, with the following conditions, that we implement option A for the site plan, that the landscape plan that was originally submitted be a part of the final plan to include the landscape aisle in front of both drive-through windows with additional landscaping in that aisle, and that the floating sign, floating arch sign be a part of the final construction.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Mr. Lenick?
I, too, would just like to say this process for the citizens has been going on for quite some time, talking with the McDonald's people, the franchise owner, about their proposal, about the new store. And I guess I've come a long ways during that time. Initially was not as much in favor as I find myself tonight. I think they've taken to heart the suggestions of our staff, of our elected officials, and of the people of Smyrna. And I think they've come up with a better design that's gonna be more attractive for Smyrna and make it a better store and better for our community. And we look forward to, you know, the franchise holder being, remaining involved in our community and supporting our community and doing all the right things. And I plan to support this motion. Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, Ms. Welch.
I also wanted to thank you for working with us and listening to our comments and making the changes for us. We really appreciate it. We're looking forward to it, to your opening.
I'd say y'all get an Academy Award for that little thing y'all did about, let's see if we can do the same. Y'all planned that out. Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's as many as you're gonna get tonight. That's five to zero, unanimous. Thank you. John Cawcuff, Hugh Robinson, tell them to get started on the next deal. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Adam, 4B, 2014-034. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this is a public hearing, rezoning request, Z14003. This will actually be tabled until April 21st. This is rezoned request from R15 to RAD conditional, 4.01 acre tract, landlot 335, 4105, North Cooper Lake Road. McLean Corporation applicant requests that this item be tabled. This is a public hearing, and I don't know if there's anybody here that's here tonight that may not be able to be here on the 21st of April. But I would give you an opportunity to speak or make any comments that you'd like to make. This will be tabled until April 21st. Anyone here that wants to make any comment? It's not one of these, behind this curtain, we're doing this, that made some, I think they're gonna make some changes. Is that correct, Ken, to the? So I'd give anybody the opportunity to speak if they wanted to speak. If not, I'm gonna ask that Corky Welch, I think that's right, will make the motion that we table this item along with C, which is a, is a grant, a sanitary sewer easement between the city of Smyrna and McLean Corporation. That'll be the next one. But we'll do this one first to table the 21st.
Thank you. Like to make a motion to table item 2014-034, public hearing on zoning requests, Z14-003, until April 21st, 2014.
Before we get a second, I know Brad Thompson, the applicant's here. Brad, is anything you want to say or? Okay, good deal. Just wanted to, I didn't want to... Now, I'll take a second on the table. Motion second, table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five to zero to table till the 21st of April. Item C, 2014-036, American Council granted sanitary sewer easement between the city of Smyrna and McLean Corporation LLC to allow the installation of sanitary sewer piping for the proposed adjacent residential development. This will be tabled till the 21st. I'm sure there's nobody here wants to talk about sanitary sewer tonight. So, Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to make a motion on item number 2014-036 to table this item until April the 21st, 2014.
Motion second, table 21st. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Am I missing something? There we go. It's approved five to zero. Item D, this public hearing's on request, Z14-006, modification of currently approved site plan and building elevations, 10.454 acre tract, landlots 489, 490, 519, 520, northwest corner of the intersection of Fleming Street and Atlanta Road, David Weekly Homes. I know the applicant's here, I see their attorney. Don't start charging them yet. Mr. Title the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, David Weekly Homes is seeking approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved zoning plan and building elevations for Pod C and D at the Belmont Hills redevelopment project at the northwest corner of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Fleming Street. This item was tabled on February 17th, 2014, to be brought back before this body this evening. The subject property was originally rezoned on January 20th, 2009, from G.C. to R15 to mixed use for this Belmont project. And this proposed zoning amendment went before the Urban Design Commission on January 14th, 2014, as was recommended for approval by a vote of eight to zero. Staff has looked through this item very thoroughly and does recommend approval.
I know the applicant is here. I personally am excited about David Weekly Homes coming to Smyrna, Georgia. I can't wait. Not that I'm gonna buy one of them, but they're a great builder. I think Corky Welch, well, I'm gonna let Mr. Moore come forward after Ken, what's your name, Sudrith, is gonna give us the presentation on that. This is gonna be another, this is like having Michael Siegler back, the librarian.
I do my best, ma'am.
Mr. Sudrith?
Again, this is a modification only in the sense that it is a site plan. This is not a land use issue. The land use stuff has been approved. But with that original approval, it was bound to have to come back for site plan review. So that's really what this is. It does follow a zoning procedure, but it is plan approval. The use, in essence, is really not the big discussion on that. We all know where Belmont is. This is actually classified as Pods C and D, which would bring, it's sort of the third and fourth pod as you go south on Atlanta Road from the intersection of Windy Hill. It would be right next to Fleming. They are asking for approval of site plan for single-family homes of 156 units with the associated open space and amenities, as well as approval of building elevations. Those elevations are a little bit unique. I will let them explain it in greater detail. But in essence, it has sort of a townhouse look, but they're not attached. This is the currently approved site plan. You can see in the bottom right-hand quarter, Pod C and D that I referenced, those are the two pods that we are talking about tonight that would allow the use for the residential. This is the new proposed site plan. We did table this last month, and one of the reasons that it was tabled came from the developer. They wanted to sort of tweak the development, and really what they ended up tweaking was the open space aspect. If you recall, originally, the open space basically was in the center of the development, totally shielded on all sides, and it ran sort of parallel to Atlanta Highway. What they have done is turn that so it's more perpendicular to Atlanta Highway, yeah, Atlanta, and have opened up that area so that you can actually see green from the road looking into the development. As a result of that, they have lost eight units. So that's where the 156 came from. Last month, we were looking at a plan of 164. They do have different sections throughout the development, which I will allow them to describe. It is primarily a rear-loaded development that will have, use alleys on that. It will be private streets, and it will be gated. These are, again, just showing some of the road details. These are the elevations. Now, you know, these, this product doesn't exist in Smyrna, and I'm not sure it really exists in the metro area in this fashion. David Weekly Homes is really based out of Texas, and they have, they do have the product there. I do believe they have them maybe in some other states as well. But basically, it is taking the detached, they have detached that sort of townhouse look. They have three different products. If you remember during the work session, that around the perimeter is one product, then you step in, you have another product. And then the product that actually was closest to the green was a third product. Again, pictures of the subject property, we know where that is. So staff is recommending approval of this site plan based upon the stipulations that were submitted January 20th, that the, everything has to be in compliance with the Belmont plan dated August 10th, 2012, outside of what we are changing tonight. So there'll be no, there is no other changes other than what we've talked about tonight. And that we're changing Pod C and D to allow them to have this site plan on it. The minimum floor area cannot be any less than 1,500 square feet. Whoops. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's, again, a plan approval, not a land use question.
I think the question probably for the developer, as far as a phased approach, I know there was some discussion about where you were gonna start. Can you, for the general public out there, can you give us a general description of how y'all plan on phasing this?
We can. We can.
Mr. Cawcuff, before we get any further, I know that for some reason, law already told it to be sworn in, like the rest of us. But if we have folks that are, you know, did I ask for any? Is this a public hearing, by the way? Am I losing? I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against or make any public comment concerning this amendment to the site plan? Okay, for those that want to speak, anybody that thinks you want to speak or you need to come forward and we need to get you sworn in, even if you end up deciding not to speak, I'd really like to get everybody sworn in one time.
Yeah, I'll speak.
Y'all just have a seat. Kevin Moore, John Moore's older brother.
He'll appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I'm gonna let Mr. Grenat speak to the question about phasing as it relates to phasing of this development. Kind of go over some of the broader topics, introduce what we're proposing here on behalf of David Weekly Homes, and he can also do that as well. Mr. Sudrith did a good job of explaining what we're here about tonight, and that is proposing site plan approval for what's been known as Pod C and D for Belmont Hills mixed-use development. This was, in the original plan slated, and you saw it on the plan that Mr. Sudrith showed you on the screen, as two pods, Pod C and Pod D, that were always intended to come back once it was ready to be developed and go vertical with construction, for detailed site plan approval and product and design approval. There's a number of different uses that were, however, were already approved for these, for this site, including townhomes primarily is what was slated for Pod C and D is what was thought of at that time. With what David Weekly Homes has put together is, actually, we think is very exciting. Very exciting for this particular location, for this overall mixed-use development. And that is injecting single-family detached homes at this location. All of the homes that were described to you, and there's three different home types that will be a part of this community of 156 homes. All of those are detached. Now, they're almost, you know, they're clustered together, and that, and from a conceptual standpoint, it's kind of like taking townhomes, at least on the perimeter ones, and then detaching those is the idea conceptually from that standpoint. And then as you come in to the central part of the development, which you saw on the site plan, it has the green space, pool, pavilion, and park areas. You move to a different type of product. You have that detached townhome-type product that you saw that's on around the perimeter. Then the next type of home product is one in which you have more traditional home that would have, it's a two-story home with living areas on one floor, then the bedrooms on the, on the second story. Then you get to the third type of home, which centralizes around that central green area and park area in the center of the development, which is a master-on-the-main larger type of home with additional bedrooms upstairs. So you really have three different types of distinct home products that would, from David Weekly Homes' standpoint, really invite a wide range of buyers, of home buyers, from young professionals to empty nesters, and really create what they've called a cross-generational community, one that could support a variety of home buyers and be attractive to a variety of home buyers for this area. And in particular, they've had the success with this type of community and this type of product, which I think is pretty exciting and very much exciting for this location. Briefly, I want to explain, because, you know, when we had our work session and we presented the plan, we had to request a table, and we, David Weekly Homes came back and tweaked that plan, really. It just tweaked it by taking that open space, green space amenity area that was in the center and turned it so that it now opens up all the way to Atlanta Road. And that was really driven by marketing, the marketing people who looked at this and said, you know what would be really neat? Is if people either walking or driving by on Atlanta Road could see into the community, see the quality of the amenities, see the quality of not only the houses on the, that are on the road or facing the road, but by passing by, you'll be able to see all three home products as you go in to see that there are different, different home products. And like I said, to see the quality of the amenities and the overall community from Atlanta Road. So it really makes sense from that standpoint. And that was the driver behind the change, was just a different focus on how this could be marketed in perhaps a better way, and certainly one that opens it up to the community as a whole as it comes down... one that opens it up to the community as a whole as it comes down Atlanta Road. Last part of this is want to remind the council of a couple of things, that this has been approved by the, by, already from a design standpoint, by the requirements of, of the Smyrna for the UDC, as well as staff has recommended approval. You'll note that their recommendation comes with several stipulations. One, this is still must adhere to the original stipulations of zoning that were put in place. Number two, as a plan approval, why you see the detailed level on those plans and on the cross-sections of the roads, including the landscaping, and including the very details of how wide roads are and how wide sidewalks are and where those are located, are all in these plans, as well as the elevations for all of these homes, as well as floor plans have all been submitted and are part of that package before you, because this is a detailed site plan approval. That was part of the initial zoning process, too, that happened several years ago. With that, have some gentlemen here who can answer any questions that I might not be able to. With David Weekly Homes, as I said before, Mr. David Gurnat's here, as well as Jeff Bramlett and Wes Kimbrell are all here from David Weekly Homes and can provide any responses or answers that, to questions that you may have, as well as on behalf of the owner, Halpern Enterprises, Mr. Steve West is here as well, can answer any questions that we may need to be able to have responses to in the, it relates to something more overall for Belmont Hills. With that, we would respectfully request your approval of the site plan as proposed with the stipulations that staff has recommended, which contain all of the detailed level plans and elevations that have been mentioned to you previously. Thank you for your time here tonight. And before I'm through, I'm going to let him actually answer your question about the phasing. It'd help if I looked down at my notes. David?
Yes, my name's David Gurnat, and I thank the members of the council for working with us and members of staff and being so good to work with as well. We thank you for your time tonight. Mr. Welch, on your question, and I believe related to the phasing, we would still, we have a phasing plan that's actually on that site plan. There's a corner of it that kind of shows a Phase 1, 2, and 3, where Phase 1 is kind of the northeast corner and the main entrance there, and does include a portion of the green, the central green parkway there. Phase 2 would, would come south from there and includes the balance of the central green park there, as well as additional lots. And then Phase 3 kind of goes west of Atlanta Road there. And we've tried to get product types of each of the three different products in each of those phases.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it?
Yes, we'd welcome to answer any other questions or respond to any other issues for tonight, but again, we would respectfully request your approval of the detailed site plan. Thank you.
Mr. Wilkerson?
Yes, I have a question. You said that with this revised plan, that you reduced the number of homes. Can you tell me what section that those homes were reduced from? I think you said there was eight?
Totally. It was roughly four of the three-story smallest homes and four of the medium-sized homes. We retained the same number of the master-on-the-main homes that ran our original site plan.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then my other question is about the, the drives, is that the, most of them are rear-loading, so the ones on the, I guess you would say, on the west side of the property, are they facing the, the street that goes to the circle that, like where the, that leads to the elementary school? So those are facing the street?
Yes.
And then the, the drive, if you could just explain where the rear-loading is?
Sure.
How do I get to that site plan?
From the site?
It might be easier if we show it up on the screen.
Okay. Thank you.
And the proposed site plan is now up, is up on the screen, and what you'll see, you have Atlanta Road is on the right-hand side of the plan as you're looking at it on the screen, with Fleming Street along the bottom. All the homes that are located along Atlanta Road, for example, those all face out. Those are all front-facing homes towards Atlanta Street and are accessed by the street running behind them. Same goes for the, I'll call it the Belmont Hills Street on the left-hand side, which you were speaking of, the west side, that goes towards the elementary school. Again, those homes likewise are all facing out to that street. And you'll see, and that, that holds true for all the way around from a perimeter standpoint. If you'll see, we also provided those elevations, both rear and front-facing elevations, to staff. In fact, he showed you some of those. You can see that even the rears look very nice and have architectural dimension and design to it, even with the garages. So it's a very attractive product all the way around. But yes, those are front-facing units.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we had one gentleman that was sworn in. If you'd like to come forward, if there's something you'd like to say, tell us who you are and where you live, and make any comment that you'd like to make.
Stephen McQuade, 1555 Roswell Street, and it's, it's more of a general comment that I read in the, in the staff recommendations, that from Cobb County School Board showed a minimum impact on the elementary school, seeing that the school was 100 below capacity. But I was questioning if they contacted the school itself as a parent and one that's gotten very involved in the school. The school is going to be close to capacity next year already without this development, the development across the street from my house with 76 more homes, the other weekly project on Powder Springs, and all the other great development that we're glad to see. So I just, with that said, I was curious if the school was contacted, because I know the principal's already considering having to hire people. So it almost seems like they just took a number due to the amount of students and didn't look into that and moving, yeah, go ahead.
I think it's standard that we ask the, the school board, they get a form from us and...
And that's exactly right, Mayor. There's actually a letter from the school board in there saying all of that. So it wasn't, one, it wasn't anything that staff did and calculated and said, hey, that's what the school board, no, we actually contacted them, and they've actually responded.
You know, I think because of the school, that's a big draw for David Weekly Homes.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'm just, I guess, because obviously, he's the first one who's actually taking a risk, which is great on the project. But moving forward, I just, I don't know if it's more of just as a, as a parent, in, in a, I don't know, advice, not the right word, but moving forward is, with these reduced setbacks and all that, that seems to be increasing within the city, and I'm looking at it across from my house, and the impact that's going to have, because it's, no kids are moving in yet, but it's inevitable. We've got tons between here and neighborhoods around us, that I was also curious then, is, you know, I know they're not developing apartments, but with this going forward, the school's going to be over capacity within a very short time, and what point will you and the city work with Cobb County to further these discussions of another elementary school, because
Mayor?
I see it becoming a problem pretty quickly.
I was just going to mention to you, the more rooftops we get, we will have enough to get a new school. So we have all this new building coming on with families, and that's the problem, is that with so many apartments, we have not had that coha, what they call the rooftops?
No, yeah. The rooftops, I know, were good, because that was the discussions we had across the street, without the rooftops, the good commercial buildings that come. I'm not saying I'm against this at all. I'm just, just with clarification.
We'll be working on it.
Because obviously, as long as they took together that school built, it's not going to hap, we're going to have more kids than the school before it's built.
I'm glad somebody's paying attention, because that's part of the whole zoning process, is for us to make sure that...
Yeah, I was just curious on that site plan, if there's, in the corners, was there access for the kids to walk into the school? Because, as you know, in the afternoon, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic from Fleming to the roundabout and back and all that, and I guess that was it, so.
Hopefully, I mean, this is going to be a phased project, and by the time they finish up and get the kids in there, we'll, we'll make sure that...
Just also because I know the administration there had no idea. That's maybe their fault, too, for not knowing this was coming down the pike, but for whatever that's worth.
No, that's a, that's a great comment, so thank you. Y'all want to explain anything? Y'all just going to sit there? Sure. We're taking all the heat, and y'all just, sitting there in your suits, smiling. I mean, it is a good problem to have.
Yes, it is a good problem to have. It's the right kind of questions you want to hear. But yes, we do provide connectivity to sidewalks right out of this development, which will lead right to the school. And I think also it's important, too, when you look at what's being proposed at 156 homes, what Pod C and D really had slated for it as zoned, possibility of over 400 units would, could occupy Pod C and D, primarily as townhomes. And so, which is fine, townhomes are great products if they're done correctly. And so I think the comparison ought to be in this grate that David Weekly Homes saw this as something different, to put in a project like this and to maintain that value and actually come in at something that is well below what has already been tentatively, you know, blessed by the city back in, when this was originally zoned. So I think it's exciting from that standpoint.
I mean, I agree. I mean, I think one of the draws that we're, we're getting a lot of residential in that area, and that creates rooftops, and I'm hoping we're going to see some commercials, some restaurants, some other things that happen at Belmont Hills now. But I mean, I'm glad that folks are coming up and speaking up and saying, hey, have y'all checked this out? Because we, and we always do that. We always get feedback from the school board. And I don't think they just rubber stamp everything. The principal just needs to chill out. I know that guy. He's a good guy. He really is. Yes.
Now, did I, did I understand correctly before that, there's going to be like four or five different projects in this overall development, what with the, the seniors and the, these townhomes and so on and so forth? Are these townhomes, did you tell us that they were going to have an HOA or not have an HOA, or what?
The way it works is you have, for example, right now, you, you have this Pod C and D in this community for David Weekly Homes will really be, will be managed by a sub homeowners' association, but there's a master association that's required under the zoning as well for the entire mixed-use development. So it's levels of association. So there'll be a homeowners' association just for the management and enforcement and covenants and all the normal types of things that you'll have, just for this residential component of the overall mixed-use project, but there is a master association as well.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Any questions, anyone? Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that being said, I'd also like to thank David Weekly Homes to come, for coming to Smyrna, along with most of this body or all of this body. I think we all look forward to this project. We're all excited about seeing something new and different coming into town, and we look forward to seeing that site developed. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning request of zero, excuse me, Z14-006, modification of currently approved site plan, building elevations 10.454, acre tract, landlots 489, 490, 519, and 520, northwest corner of the intersection of Fleming Street and Atlanta Road for David Weekly Homes.
Motion second to approve this amendment.
Your Honor, just to clarify Mr. Welch's motion, that includes all the recommended stipulations from staff?
Yes, it does. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Five, zero. Seems like we do better with just five council members. That's approved now. Thank y'all very much. We're looking forward to it. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. A is 2014-050, appointment of a permanent and alternate license and variance board member, members. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a, the city has a license and variance board that is composed of staff members, mostly senior staff members, and the purpose of the board is to hear routine privileged license and variance requests. We've had a little bit of turnover in our membership due to folks leaving the city and just other reasons why they are no longer qualified to be on the board. And so it's time to appoint a new board as well as variance board members. So at this time, I would like to recommend that the permanent board members be Tammy Jones, Scott Stokes, and Roy Akry, and then the alternate variance board members would be myself, Eric Taylor, Paige Day, Eric Randall, and David Lee. And we do recommend approval.
Are you here motioning we approve these appointments? Have a motion? Right, I need a second.
Second.
Just clarification, this is a, these are appointments, do they, they never expire? Mr. Cochran? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, five, zero. Item six, B, under formal business, 2014-053, recommendation to utilize cooperative contract for law enforcement, fire rescue, and other vehicle, fleet vehicles, under bid 11-10-1202 of the Florida Sheriff's Association, to purchase two Era XT fire engines from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., through 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment of Georgia. Mr. Taylor, the background.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the gen title pretty much says it all. I will say that we do have $1,100,000 that was set aside as part of the 2011 splotch that was approved by voters, and it was specifically for the purpose of purchasing two new pumper fire trucks. Our fire department has been looking fairly diligently since Chief Day has gotten here, and so they have located two trucks that they were able to spend, that they're able to get for a total of $905,108 through this cooperative contract for law enforcement through the Florida Sheriff's Association. And so staff does recommend approval.
This is part of the splotch. I'll ask Mr. Welch.
I'd like to call Ms. Paige Day up if you, if you could, please. Chief Day, I'd just like to, if you could, give us a, just a general background of what the process was and how, how we came about this.
Absolutely. Well, since I got here on January 6th, 2014 of this year, I did a research study of all of the engines and apparatus that we have in our fleet. And I know that the voters and, and you all worked very diligently, so you were able to put these funds away. So we were able to utilize them for a purchase of two pumper engines, type-one engines. The engines that we're going to replace are, they're, they were built in 1999. They've had a lot of hard use. They're tired. They need to be replaced. So we were in a situation where we needed to go ahead and purchase these vehicles so we could go ahead and start rebuilding our fleet, which is, which is needed. I was working closely with purchasing and also based on past experience and looked at different ways, and also with you, too, Mr. Cochran, to make sure that everything was on the up and up. But there's different ways of allocating purchase funds by piggybacking off contracts that have already been bid, and, and they've already gone through that whole process. So you eliminate a lot of time instead of having to determine what specifications you want for an apparatus, sending it out for bid, having it open for 30 days, then giving the opportunity for people to bring in their bids back for another 30 days. So it cuts out a lot of time. And we're in a situation right now where we really need to act on this and get two type-one pumpers into our city to serve the community's needs. Pierce happened to have, it's, it's one of the large companies. I contacted Pierce, Ewan Rosenbauer, and a couple other of the major manufacturers for apparatus to see what they had available in, in their fleet, or what was coming down the line, a demo, if you will, so that way we could go ahead and purchase these vehicles quickly based on this contract price. And Pierce happened to have two that satisfies our needs, and we would be able to get them here in service, up and running for our citizens by August 8th at the absolute latest.
Thank you. For the record, from council, Mr. Cochran, this is fully acceptable as procurement from a legal standpoint? a legal standpoint? Mr. Mayor, I have no other questions.
Any other questions?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to utilize the contract for law enforcement, fire rescue, and other fleet vehicles under bid 11-10-1202 of the Florida Sheriff's Association to purchase two Arrow XT fire engines from Pierce Manufacturing, Incorporated, through 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment of Georgia.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, five, zero. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the one item which is approval of the council meeting minutes?
Sure.
I can do that.
Unless, he just did it.
That's the consent agenda.
Okay.
Do you hear motion, we approve the consent agenda? It'll take a long to get a second there.
Second.
Motion second, approve the consent agenda, which is the minute. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, five, zero. We'll start tonight with committee reports with Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report that we had a vision committee meeting on Friday to look over the list of names of people that we have. We have a really great list, but we can always use more, but we will be cutting off our acceptance of people who want to be involved in the vision committee on this coming Wednesday, because we just, we've gotten so many people. Now, the process will be that we'll have 35 people on a steering committee, but we have 11 different focus groups. So we need, we need everybody that's on that list. You just may be in different groups. So we will have a conference call on Fridays for the committee to get together. We have selected, at our Friday meeting, we did select three comparison cities. We will be doing our kickoff on April 14th at 7:30 a.m., and Max, I know you've got a golf tournament that day, but at 7:30, we're just going to make pictures and do a...
Oh, pictures, I can be there for that.
So I think you've, I talked to Christie about that. So it'll be the 14th. The week of the 14th, we will be doing interviews and we'll be doing focus groups all during that week, and interviewing the people for the steering committee and the focus groups, and those, those interviews will be held at Bronner and Earl Wolf Center, equally, depending on how many we can do in one day. So we are excited and we're moving forward. We have two chair, co-chairs. We have Tony Britton, who's a resident of Smyrna, is going to be one of our co-chairs, and you may recognize the name, he's done a lot of work with Chamber of Commerce. And our second co-chair is going to be Slade Gullidge, and Slade is very excited. I think he's a Ward 6 resident, and so it's, it's going to be exciting. We need to get as many people in, all over the city as we can possibly get. So talk to your councilperson and volunteer. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
I know that you, every one of you out here will agree with this. We've got 17 days left till spring begins, and I can't wait. It's 71 day and it's 13 the next. It's just been the most unbelievable weather. Other than that, I have nothing else to report this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see anybody with a report out there this evening, but I would like to encourage anybody in Woodford or in the city in general that's interested in becoming a Friend of the Garden Tour or sponsor of the Garden Tour, to get in touch with Ms. Ann Kirk. And the Friend of the Garden Tour is for a contribution of $100. You can be a Friend of the Garden Tour, and I believe the sponsor is $250. They are publishing, I believe there's a tour program that's coming out for the Garden Tour this spring, and they need all the, all the sponsors they can get. So if you're interested in that, please make contact with one of them. They sure appreciate it. No further.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
I don't have anything from the library or the Parks and Recreation tonight, but I'd like to announce that the police department is having another Coffee with the Cop event this Friday, March 7th, at Atlanta Bread Company on South Cobb Drive and down near the East West Connector, and it's going to be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Friday. Thanks.
Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to let our city clerk announce her news when we get around to her, so I'm not going to steal any thunder. I do want to thank the folks with the Creewood and Vinings Homeowners Association for allowing me to host their meeting on Sunday, February 23rd. It was good to see old friends and make some new ones and be with those folks. I also want to thank Krispy Kreme for building their store in Smyrna. Every time I've been by there in the last week, whether it's morning, mid-afternoon, or 8:30 at night, the drive-through line is backed all the way up to South Cobb Drive. It's unbelievable. It's like people in Smyrna have never seen a donut before, and it's just incredible how successful that store has been in its first week. It opened Tuesday last week, and gosh, this has got to be the most successful store in, you know, their company's history. I can't imagine any place doing more business. And I just find it interesting that in a short while, we'll have an organic grocery store, Krispy Kreme, a Del Taco, and Jim &amp; Nick's Barbecue, all right there side by side. I'm not sure what that says, it just says Smyrna's a very eclectic community with wide and varied tastes, and all of that is good. And finally, Your Honor, I mentioned upstairs, I just want to throw a shout out to your alma mater, Campbell High School. Some of you may know that I'm assisting with coaching the boys' lacrosse team this spring. We played Carrollton High School last Saturday morning and set a number of records for Campbell. They got their first win of the season, but it was the most points ever scored by Campbell High School Boys Lacrosse, 16. It was the fewest goals allowed against the Campbell High School Boys Lacrosse Team, which was three, and the largest margin of victory, 13, in their five-year program history to date. So I really think they've turned a corner, and the kids were excited, and it was a happy bus ride back. They're, they're great kids at Campbell High School. The sport is really a vehicle to teach about life, about character, and things like hard work and teamwork and discipline and working together and doing all the things that you got to do in your life. So sports are a vehicle to teach life lessons, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. So Mayor, you should be proud of your team. They play this Wednesday night at 6 o'clock versus the team, the only team that they beat last year, MLK Junior High School out of Atlanta. They beat them in quadruple overtime by one goal, and I expect they're coming in expecting to avenge that loss, and I'm hoping we can deny them that opportunity. With that, I yield.
You going to let the city clerk make an announcement? Ms. Terry Graham, we'll let you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make an announcement that after a search for our deputy city clerk, we have found her, and she is sitting next to me.
Where is she?
Sitting next to me. Sitting next to me. Her name is Lisa Moore, and she comes to us from our Court Services Department. We were able to hire from within, and we are very proud of that, and we're very anxious to have her start. She started today, working with the, in the deputy city clerk position. She's been filling in for our previous city clerk that left us in January, and she has been doing a wonderful job, so we're very happy to have her with us.
Glad to have you. Anything else, Wade, you want to say about, I don't know if we even had lacrosse when I was in high school.
They didn't have lacrosse when either of us were in high school, not in Georgia, but congratulations to Lisa Moore, and we look forward to her, you know, working and growing and helping the citizens.
You got the job. Okay. Eric, anything?
I had nothing.
Mr. Cochran? Terry, anything else? We have no one that signed up for public citizens input, so. I really like this five, this five members, it's really working out good, so. If there's no other business to be brought forward, this body, I'd declare this meeting adjourned at 8:52.